Good afternoon, colleagues. Iminet Trentaikunna, Lieutenant Lieutenant Guam is back from recess. Before we left for the lunch break, Senator Will Castro, you had the floor. So I will recognize you at this time unless you're done.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, I want to thank the committee chair, the prime sponsor, for clarifying the position of the GFT and not speaking for them, but basically referring me to the right part of the letter, which is the last sentence. Madam Speaker, after reviewing the testimony and receiving a letter from someone who was also concerned about the bill, Attorney Geraldine Sepeda, I do want to make one thing clear, though, before I go into that, that I mentioned to the prime sponsor that the title does no justice to the intent, that, in my opinion, this is no longer, as Senator Talahi herself highlighted, an issue of grandfathering these students who are affected by the previous piece that we passed and was signed into law. But notwithstanding that, after going deep into the bill, debating both sides with my policy team, and reading the concerns by Attorney Geraldine Sepeda, I do want to say that while my concerns were legitimate, at least in my mind, that the return on investment to the people of Guam, whether it's fiscally or just bringing value back to the community as a contributing member of society, you know, in my opinion, based from my vantage point, outweighs those two concerns that I highlighted earlier. While I appreciate the testimony of my colleagues in terms of, you know, giving these students of a particular socioeconomic status coming out of high school an upper hand, I don't necessarily agree with one or more points. But notwithstanding that, Madam Speaker, thank you. And that's it. I just want to state that I appreciate the prime sponsor's clarification, her acknowledgement that some work could be used on the title, and the university president's position that he doesn't support the bill as written and that he, in fact, proffered certain amendments. I'll leave it up to the rest of the debate to occur so I can make a final determination on whether or not I rise in support of the bill. But I do appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I reserve the balance of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Will. On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Joseph Augustine, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, our colleagues today love to mention Bill Public Law 34-151. It's in the bill, but it originally started as Bill 32-34. And I'm the author of that bill. And during that time, many folks showed up to testify in support of the bill then because, like some of our colleagues have mentioned, let's grab the federal money first. Yes, I'm in full support of that. Let's grab all the federal money we can get. But then, as time went by, there's been a wave of emails I received that says, you know, Senator, it had good intention, but now it's starting to bite into the students, the success of our students attending the University of Guam. The folks that -- and we need to remind ourselves, when we talk merit, merit award is only given to the very few. The students that worked, I would have, I'm not going to say the hardest, but they were awarded based on their accomplishment in their four years of high school. And a result of that, some of them were financially sound. Some of those students were, when I say financially sound, their parents or whoever they live with were financially sound. They didn't have to worry about expenses, about means to get to University of Guam, means to get anywhere, worried about a meal, worried about any of those stuff. There were some of our students that are less fortunate, that had to worry about that and still struggle. Now, with that in mind, now Public Law 34-151 comes into question, that we're denying our students the opportunity when they worked very hard in high school to get an education, not knowing then that they could qualify for the Pell Grant. They struggled hard, worked hard, and they got awarded the Merit Scholarship. Merit Scholarship is awarded to a student that achieved, I guess, the top 10 in each of the schools, high schools, and their promise, four years of education equating to $50,000. Madam Speaker, our colleagues have mentioned that we don't know how much money we're going to have next year. True, very true. We don't know. I don't have a crystal ball, and I know no one here has a crystal ball that can tell us that. But a little bit of history. In FY 2018, the amount of funds that was budgeted for UOG was $5,162 for scholarships. In FY 2019, it was $4,629 million. Notice it went down, and it continues to decline. In FY 2020, it went down to $3.4. And in FY 2021, it went down to $3.65 million. So it's going down. Can we expect it to go up next year? No, with this pandemic. I would hope and pray that it would able to stay at its current rate amount. But we need to always remind ourselves that when we put it in the budget for University of Guam, we give them an alum sum so they can divvy it up all they want. So yes, we can talk about the nurses' training. Yes, we need to help the nurses. Social work, yes, we need to help the social workers. The Doc Sanchez Program, the YEC Program, the AHEG Program, so a bunch of programs. The Marine Lab graduates. But it was up to University of Guam to determine how they want to divvy it up. There are a total of nine or 10 programs that they need to sit down when they do their budget and what they estimate they could get or what they hope to get from this body approved by the governor for their funding for scholarship. I haven't yet received what their breakdown is for FY 2021, but if my colleagues want, I can have this, what they have for FY 20, put up, and you can see the difference. Also, the University of Guam is granted the authority by law for the Board of Regents to create their own scholarship program. Keep in mind, create their own, what they believe other scholarship programs should, they should have at the University of Guam. So when we talk about funding the University of Guam for scholarship, it encompasses both merit and everything else. Catch 22. Here's the money, divvy it up how you believe you need to divvy up. If the University of Guam felt that the Merit Scholarship is, there's too much money there, and they want to change it, let us know, and then we'll come up with a plan on how to change it to meet the needs of all our students. I was the author of Bill, of Public Law 34-151, and I'm a co-sponsor of this bill, 253-35. And if my colleagues will look at all the testimony of the University of Guam, I'm not too sure, I think it's page four of page 46 of the testimony, they gave a breakdown of how much a student would get in stipend, $300 for 18 months for freshman and sophomore year, and then junior and senior, increase to $500. They're proposing to increase that to $500. For regardless, under the merit, had nothing to do with the Pell Grant. The Pell Grant's intent, and was mentioned earlier, Madam Speaker, is that the folks that apply for Pell Grant are for the folks, for the students that are low income. There's other grants that do exist out there that can help every student on Guam go to school if they qualify. And I only stand and supported this bill, Madam Speaker, and that this bill basically kind of fixes something that, unfortunately, when I introduced this 34-151 public law, before it became public law, it had very good intentions. But we're finding out that the results of that bill has hurt the opportunity for our students to go to school, to get a good meal, to buy the equipment they need, to buy the car to get to school. As soon as our mass transit gets back on track and is successful, maybe we can take a look at other things. And always keep in mind, my colleagues, the Pell Grant funding that goes to students will circulate among our community, in our economy, and we would have the money in the revenue base to give the University of Guam additional money. But it bothers me, after we pass this public law first, the first thing that came out of the University of Guam is I'm going to raise the tuition. We did everything we could in the last term to find ways to help them, and they ended up turning around and said, we're going to raise the tuition because we don't have enough money, but we're going to reorganize. I went up to University of Guam back then, saw the groundbreaking of the engineering building. A year later, they had to resubmit a grant request so they can get the building built. Management is the key, and I'm hoping that the University of Guam will just take a look at where they're at and come to terms that there is no pot, there's no money in the pot today, and we all have to work together. And as my colleagues have fought and speak highly of education, funding education, when we start the budget process next year, I would really hope to hear they speak about funding the University of Guam, funding the Guam Community College, funding the Department of Education, funding the charter schools. Then we can, then once we come to terms with that, then we'll figure out everything else. Because Guam Memorial Hospital, public health, public safety and education, those are the only three areas that we should be focusing on. Everything else is secondary. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Go ahead, Pobetsu, Senator Augustine. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, I'm going to allow Senator Louise Munya, I will allow you to speak. You are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a, maybe a concern before I speak on the measure, if I could yield a question to the author.
Please state your question.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So on page three, on line, I believe it's line one, the substituted version that included the Guam Community College, the underlined part on line one, or for a period of two or four years at the Guam Community College. I was just wondering, because I know that the, I was told by the author that the Guam Community College has just added a brand-new program that was a four-year program. But if a merit awardee wants to do two years at Guam Community College and then do the, finish the undergraduate program for the other two years at University of Guam, would this still qualify them under that? Because the way I read it, it says, if you go to GCC, you can either get the two-year or the four-year, not get a two-year, start your two years there and then finish your two years at the University of Guam, if she can just clarify.
Thank you, Senator Munya. Legislative Secretary, would you like to yield?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I thank the previous speaker for the question. She is right that it is not clearly stated that you can do your two years at Guam Community College and later move over to the University of Guam, but I welcome an amendment that will clarify this in the bill, and I'll work with the previous speaker if we can have a moment's recess.
Thank you, Legislative Secretary. Senator Munya, does that help?
Yes, yes, Madam Speaker, and I would like to request for that recess if we can.
I will grant it. Moment's recess.
Thank you, Senator Munya.
I appreciate that. On the amendments by Senator Louise Munya, anyone wishing to speak? If not, are there any objections? Okay. Senator Marsh Titel, then Senator Perez.
Situas Massey, Madam Speaker. And so I appreciate wanting to clarify the language, and we want to make sure that both UOG and GCC are included. And so I just wonder if there's a way to write this that provides that intent but provides flexibility as well. As a university professor, we had students that went back and forth for a variety of reasons. They might have one course at GCC because it wasn't being offered at UOG for a year or two, or things like this. And so I wonder if there's a way to make this more flexible so that it covers GCC and UOG, but that it allows the student the flexibility, whether it's one year at GCC, three years at UOG, or some sort of combination thereof. So perhaps just asking the author if she sees a way or a need for that flexibility.
Thank you, Senator Marsh. I'm going to go ahead and yield to either the author of the legislation or
So perhaps just asking the author if she sees a way or a need for that flexibility.
Thank you, Senator Marsh. I'm going to go ahead and you to either the author of the legislation or the amendment to answer that question, if you can. Legislative Secretary, please, do you know the answer?
Thank you very much. The previous speaker does bring up a good point. There could be a situation where a student begins their time in college, at the Guam Community College for only a semester or only a year, and then moves to the University of Guam to complete three years or three and a half years. And so, yes, I'd like to work with her to fix this amendment so that we can cover all of those situations that we may, we may be preventing a student from completing college with. So if we can have a moment's recess, ma'am.
Thank you, I will allow it.
I'm in at 35 minutes later than Guahan is back from recess. Senator Munia, you still have the floor. You are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I apologize again. I never want to be that one that's going to delay or stall anything, but if I can, I'd like to withdraw my amendment.
On the motion to withdraw Senator Munia's amendment, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing? None. Motion carries. Senator Munia, I still allow you to have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And upon discussing it with the previous speaker and the author of the bill, and then working it out with legal to make sure that our recipients can utilize the scholarships to the best of their ability between both of the institutions, we came up with a language that will take care of not a specific timeline between two years and four years, but they can go back and forth between the two institutions. So it is posted, I believe, on the drive, and if we can follow along, the amendment will read. Beginning at line four, let me see where to start. If I could just start from the beginning. It's, "A tuition and fees at the University of Guam and the Guam Community College. Tuition and fees for each academic year will be paid by the Student Financial Assistance Fund for a period of not more than four years in an undergraduate program" at, and we added in the word "either" at the University of Guam, comma, "or" the Guam Community College, comma, "or both." And then we scratched out for a period of two years, four years, or four years at the Guam Community College.
Thank you, Senator Munia. On the amendment, on the amendment, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing? None. Motion carries. Senator Munia, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, still hoping that we can have this continuous discussion so that we can, we can utilize the scholarships as well as we can for as many students as we can for the ones that deserve or need assistance. And that's really what this whole program is about. We can go back and forth about who we think is more deserving or not. But in the end, really, Madam Speaker, it's all about helping our students get the best education they can in our institutions and not allow them to leave the island. And that's really the whole purpose. As a mom here, I would, I would love my children to stay here and utilize the institutions here. And if they, or any other student can afford to stay here, I would prefer that. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Munia. On the main motion, if no one wishes, I'm going to go ahead and have Legislative Secretary on your bill to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and to all of our colleagues for the robust discussion today. I want to especially thank our Merit Scholars, the students at the University of Guam and GCC for lending their voice to this issue, to bringing it to our attention, and for helping us to make this decision today. I'd like to reiterate how important this Merit Scholarship is to so many of our island students who strive for four long years in high school to receive this scholarship based on their performance, based on, based on the hard work that they, they put into their studies. And our Merit Scholars really represent the best potential for our island and for our young people, and serve as role models to aspiring college students. They have the Merit Scholarship through sacrifice and dedication, and many of them, even with the Merit Scholarship, are still in need of additional resources to afford a full college education. And we've heard their call for action from these students, and we've come together today to make the best bill possible so that we can continue to reward our students who are working hard for their Merit Scholarship, reward them for their, for their excellence in studies, and to ensure that we're not punishing them for their economic status so that we can allow them to use both the financial aid offered to them from the U.S. Department of Education, the Pell Grants, the student, student loans, as well as their Merit Scholarship. So I thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I plead with my colleagues today to support this measure and the future of Guam. Situus Massey.
Thank you very much, Legislative Secretary. So on the motion to place, Madam Secretary.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I move to place Bill Number 253-35 as substituted and further amended on the floor into the voting file.
Thank you. On that motion, without any objections, seeing or hearing? None. Motion carries. We will go ahead and proceed now to Senator Sabina's bill on 283-35COR. Senator Sabina, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 283-35COR as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation and Procurement to substitute it on the floor.
So Senator Perez, if you can just go ahead and restate it and do the substituted version to accept?
Yes, yeah, I moved to-
If you can go ahead and read it, and then the author, and then the title, and then ask to accept it, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to accept Bill Number 283-35COR. It's an act to, as substituted on the floor. It's an act to repeal and reenact Chapter 53 of Division 2, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to updating the Guam Safe Drinking Water Act, to repeal Chapter 53a of Division 2, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Guam Led Ban Act, and to repeal and reenact Division 6, Chapter 6 of Division 2, Title 22 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to updating the Guam Safe Drinking Water Regulations. It's a bill authored by myself.
The motion to accept the substituted version. Are there any objections? Seeing or hearing? None. Motion carries. Senator Perez, on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 283-35COR as amended by the Committee and substituted on the floor into the third reading file, and I wish to discuss.
Senator Perez, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 283-35, also known as the Guam Safe Drinking Water Act, is a comprehensive overhaul of local regulations protecting Guam's drinking water. It was developed by and amended in close collaboration with Guam EPA with input from Guam Water Works Authority. This measure closes regulatory gaps and updates and incorporates the Guam Led Ban Act, and it ultimately allows Guam EPA to regain the ability to directly cite violators. As our island faces a global pandemic, it's essential that we continue this important work of ensuring that our public water system continues to provide safe drinking water with the added challenge of addressing the novel coronavirus pandemic. Local safe drinking water laws have not been updated since 1977, and the respective rules and regulations were last updated in 2005. Over the past decade and a half, revisions to the U.S. Safe Drinking Water Act and associated regulations have resulted in Guam losing primacy over key rules which control microbiological quality of drinking water obtained from both surface and groundwater, as well as chemical contaminants such as disinfection byproducts. These rules are the primary regulations that protect the public against the transmission of waterborne diseases and chemical toxins in drinking water. While Guam currently monitors all public water systems to ensure compliance using federal regulations, ultimate enforcement authority rests with the federal government. In order to regain primacy, adopting regulations no less stringent than the U.S. EPA is critical, which Bill 283-35 does by reference to the current federal regulations. Other key significant proposed revisions pertaining to the Guam Led Ban Act, as aforementioned, Bill 283- Bill 283-35 incorporates it within the Guam Safe Drinking Water Act and moves implementation provisions into regulations that mirrors federal version, which can then facilitate future updates. It requires regulations regarding the ban on the sale of lead pipe, plumbing fittings, and fixtures to include the following: the ability to require the removal of new or existing pipe, plumbing fittings or fixtures, solder or flux that are not in compliance with lead-free requirements; certification of persons who conduct sampling to ensure compliance; and it also requires regulations for alternative methods of proving compliance with lead-free provisions, such as requiring third-party certification that products are lead-free. It also authorizes Guam EPA to confiscate, destroy, or order the destruction or return shipment of products or materials that do not conform to lead-free requirements. Lead, which is banned in the U.S. since 1986 and 1999 on Guam, is particularly dangerous to children because their growing bodies absorb more than adults do, and their brains and nervous systems are more sensitive to its damaging effects. Even low levels of lead in the blood of children can result in behavior and learning problems, lower IQ, hyperactivity, slowed growth, hearing problems, and anemia. Bill 283-35 establishes a process to set interim action levels for emerging contaminants, those which the U.S. EPA has not established a maximum contaminant level when the contaminant presents an unacceptable health risk to the public. This process could be applied to address per- and polyfluoroalkyl compounds, or PFAS, which was found to exceed the health advisory limit of 70 parts per trillion in two of Guam's water wells. PFAS continues to be used in firefighting foam. An exposure to this contaminant affects the function of the liver and immune system and increases the risk for certain cancers, high blood pressure in pregnant women, and other effects as more studies are being conducted. Bill 283-35 updates enforcement provisions that are also necessary to regain primacy. The current statute sets civil penalties at $5,000 per violation per day. The Lead Ban Act, which was passed later in the 1990s, included penalties of $27,500 per violation per day. The new act is proposing a total penalty of up to $32,000 per violation per day. It is important to emphasize that this is an up-to-amount. Guam EPA works on a graduated scale in assessing penalties based on severity and culpability, with the highest penalties reserved for the most extreme cases, such as those involving illness or death. And new enforcement provisions add the ability to sue for penalties and damages, which is needed to gain primacy, and also adds criminal penalties which did not exist before. Bill 283-35 authorizes Guam EPA to develop regulations, although none are formed at this time, for bottled water companies, water vending machines, water hauling, and rainwater catchments. Bill 283-35 requires the development of criteria for sanitary surveys of public water systems. A sanitary survey is a review of a public water system to assess their capability to supply safe drinking water, and these surveys provide an opportunity for Guam EPA to visit the water system and educate the operator about proper monitoring and sampling procedures, and to provide technical assistance. At the heart of Bill 283-35 is the protection of public health by ensuring safe drinking water. This measure affirms the legal limits of over 90 regulated contaminants that are enforceable. It also establishes proactive measures through the use of sanitary surveys to ensure water qualities maintain. And by adopting recent federal regulations, it would enable Guam EPA to regain primacy in order to directly cite violators. This overhaul of the Safe Drinking Water Act is long overdue. With the structure provided in Bill 283-35, it would facilitate future updates, thus preventing lapses. Bill 283-35 was developed by and in close collaboration with Guam EPA. I would like to thank and give special thanks to the team at Guam EPA under the leadership of Administrator Walter Leon Guerrero and Deputy Administrator Michelle Lastimosa. I would like to thank Brian Bearden, the Chief Engineer and Water Division Director at Guam EPA, his staff Julie Mendoza and others, and Attorney Kristen Finney, and all the other support staff who put in the time and effort for over a year to develop this legislation. I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, and I look forward to discussion and support on this important legislation that is one of the cornerstones for protecting public health through the provision of clean drinking water that is essential to life and health at this critical time. Sutus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the main motion, anyone wishing to speak? If no one wishes to speak, Senator Kelly Marsh Titlenau on the main motion.
Sutus Massey, Maskehalu. Yes, I definitely support the updating of our Safe Drinking Water Act. If we look at the timeline, it's been 1977 since this was put into action with no real updates. That's an incredibly long period of time, and as the author stated, it's long overdue. There were some questions that I just wanted to be assured of in understanding the bill, if I might ask a few questions.
Please take your question.
So in the fiscal note, it noted that there were both increased and decreased water service and fee schedules that would be related to this bill, and I was wondering if the author had anything further to help us understand. Are there going to be increased water service charges and such possibilities if she has any further updates to the fiscal note?
Senator Perez, would you like to yield to Senator Titlenau's question?
Yes, I do. Just give me a moment, I'm going to look for the reference. So with this bill, there's no, the only fees that were adjusted has to do with the Lead Ban Act, and if I can look for that reference. Okay, so with the Lead Ban Act, the change in fee would be, so currently, what happens is Guam EPA charges an hourly rate plus 10%. And so with this one, they elected to go with a $35 an hour fee. Yeah, so basically, they just, basically are charging $35 an hour to cover anticipated costs of that particular program. But in regards to the other features of the bill, they have not, the schedules have not been updated, but there is intention to expand the fees regarding sanitary surveys, inspections, plan reviews, sampling, sampler certification, laboratory certification. So yes, they have not been developed yet, but they're in the works. So that's what I have so far.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Titlenau.
Sutus Massey, Maskehalu. Yes, it's helpful to know just exactly where we're at, if there was any additional information, and so there was some information that was new to me. The other question that I have is, if we could have a further explanation of the value of having primacy and full enforcement authority over our water, there is mention about the fact that while we carry out a lot of functions and carry out a lot of the work ourselves with the ultimate authority resting with the U.S. EPA, that it becomes a lengthier, inefficient process with enforcement being more difficult. So if the author of the bill could just outline for us the value of having primacy.
Thank you. Senator Perez, would you like to yield?
Yes, I would, and thank you for that question. It's a very good question. So I think one of the compelling reasons to regain primacy, it's not only about being self-sufficient, I think that's always something good as a policy, but I think it also can help address problems from expanding to larger problems. So if there is a noncompliance or violation, it can be handled immediately versus perhaps delaying, experiencing a potential delay. And then I think that's one of the issues that we're seeing with, you know, the stipulated orders. So there's a potential that these delays can result in larger problems and then larger types of enforcement actions such as stipulated orders versus trying to address the situation right away. And so that's, I think that that's one of the compelling reasons of regaining primacy.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Titlenau.
Sutus Massey. Yes, that's very helpful because this is a major step in us gaining primacy, and so the clearer that we understand it, the better it is for all of us to be able to decide upon this bill. The other question that I had is, there is mention within the bill that there may be some regulations on Guam, and it does allow us to therefore have regulations that are stricter than federal ones. And it does say that the regulations in general meet or exceed federal regulations, and so I was just wondering if there are indeed regulations that are particular to Guam or that we found necessary to have as stricter than federal ones, or if it's put in there as a sort of a catch-all phrase in case there is found to be that need.
Senator Perez.
Yes, I do yield to the question, and yes, basically, to have primacy, you have to have laws that are as stringent as the U.S. Safe Drinking Water Act. And in regards to, so yeah, that's just general language. If we ever fall below any kind of law or standard or regulation that the U.S. has, then we lose that ability to directly enforce. But in regards to what the bill contains, there are local provisions, so when it comes to the citing of, you know, reviewing the sites of the water systems, the public water systems, that is localized, that date, that language has been localized, but for the most part, a lot of what has been adopted by U.S. standards is also adopted in this bill by reference. But I do want to point out that there, you know, there was a definition that we kept, and because the new language in the U.S. Safe Drinking Water Act seems to be less stringent than what we currently have, and that comes in the definition of, I have to pull it up, but there was a definition that I, in speaking with the Guam EPA, that we both agreed that it would weaken the current definition, so we kept the current definition, and I would just have to look up what that, the actual word was. But it had to do with underground storage tanks. I don't know if that answers the question completely.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Titlenau.
Yes, overall, it provides me an understanding of where we're at with the bill. The bill is quite technical and quite detailed, so it's very helpful to have this guidance through it. I do have one or two other questions. It seems that there's a lot of work that is still yet to be done. There are several references about promulgating various regulations and procedures, and so I just wanted to understand if I'm interpreting this correctly, and if that is the case, if there's an estimated timeline that they've developed as to when these different regulations and procedures would be developed, if there's a formal approach to that yet.
Senator Perez.
Yes, I yield to that question. So I haven't been given an update as far as a timeline, but I do know that Guam EPA is working with U.S. EPA to apply, and so this is one of the critical points, is that this legislation needs to be adopted for them to continue the process. And so they are working with a contractor to ensure that their application goes through. So this is basically the prerequisite for them to move forward, and so from there, they can develop the timeline on when they can create these rules and regulations. But they have been working pretty diligently for this past year and a half to develop this legislation, and under the leadership of Brian Bearden and Walter, this is one of their priorities. So I can imagine that this is something that they would like to get done, you know, in the near future.
Senator Titlenau.
Sutus Massey. That also is very useful information in helping me be able to evaluate this bill. And with that, to understand that they have worked on this very diligently for the last year and a half so that we can presume, having faith that they will be continuing this. So it sounds like that they will be working with a consultant and that this legislation is part of their application, and then they will continue to work with, or they will perhaps be able to work with a consultant to develop these various regulations and procedures. If I could just ask if the consultant is part of this process.
Senator Perez, would you like to yield?
Yes, I don't have specifics on the particular consultant, but they are working to advance their application, so I believe they're just waiting for this bill to pass to continue that.
Senator Titlenau, does that suffice?
Good. And my last question that I have here is, and it seems like it's answered already, but I just want to have clarity on this. So it doesn't seem that there's anything that substantially deviates from previous practices or federal practices, other than perhaps keeping that stronger language while the U.S. EPA has maybe not currently having as strong a language. Is there anything else that deviates substantially from the federal practices or regulations?
Senator Perez.
Just give me a moment. Okay, so if you look at the rules and regs part, so most of them are adopted by reference, but you can tell which ones are locally specific because the language is there. So in the part where the citing, that is local, locally created. The Lead Ban Act has also been inputted in there as well, and for the most part, that is consistent with federal standards. So yeah, there isn't much difference. The other thing is the variance and exceptions, so that one is not part of this bill. So that's the other big difference, I think, I see, the difference between the federal and the local.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Marsh Titlenau.
Sutus Massey, Maskehalu. Yes, and if I could just ask one last question that I had in my lineup. It does mention that there are improved methods for lead ban enforcement, and so if the author of the bill could outline that for us.
Senator Perez, would you like to yield to that one?
Yes, I do, but also, if I could just go back to the previous question, I did actually do a complete thorough study to see what was different, and I just wanted to be assured of you noticed that there were some changes to the radionuclides. So in the current statute, there is a section for it, and as well as. So in the current statutes, our current regulations here that's used for Guam, it has its own separate section. But since the 15 years that the U.S. Safe Drinking Water Act has been changed, it got restructured into another section. So basically, I would say there are changes in how things were organized.
Senator Marsh Taitino?
So that's very helpful in the previous question. And then I'm not sure if that answered the lead ban enforcement, or if that reorganization is part of helping the lead ban enforcement.
Yeah, so that's one of the major changes. So with the current statute, how they determine whether something complies with lead, the lead ban is they would test for the corrosivity of the water, which can then lead to the leaching of lead and then exposure to lead within our drinking water. But that's one of the big improvements, is that now US EPA is looking at the content of lead. And, you know, previously it was 8%. 8% of the pipe. If it was under 8%, it was above 8%, then it would not be in compliance. And now the standard has been much more stringent. So with this particular legislation, we're in reducing the lead exposure. And it's based on content and not whether the water is corrosive or not. So it's a more direct indicator.
Senator Taitino, does that help? You've got about a minute.
Sidois Massey. Maske halu. Yes, and I think for all of our community, understanding that that regulation for lead is now more stringent, or has the potential to be, but it's more stringent within this bill, is something that the community would feel very assured by. So those are the questions that I have at this point. And I don't know if there is any time left, but I'd like to reserve it in case anything else comes up. Sidois Massey.
Thank you Senator Taitino. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else? Senator? Senator Charisse, you are recognized.
Thank you. I rise in support of the bill 383-35, as substituted by the author on the floor. It's a very comprehensive bill, and I'm not going to pretend to know all the details as the sponsor is familiar, but I can very much recognize the improvements that this bill is going to bring to Guam EPA's ability to, to create rules that work for them here on Guam. And not to have to rely on federal enforcement of violations of our clean water or lead. And with that ability, Guam EPA will be able to protect us better, all of us. I also think that the bill, you know, allows us a minimum of federal standards, but of course allows EPA to make more stringent standards. And allows EPA the enforcement tool that it needs. I think that's the most important part of this bill, is that they can respond potentially sooner without having to coordinate necessarily with federal EPA and that they will have that. So that, they've been planning this for years. We've been working on it. It's part of very complex applications that they make to the federal government to be able to do these types of things locally. And, and so I want to commend them and the author of this bill for the hard work that they have taken to advance in this regard. It's very clear, they said that from the, because the rules and regs were not updated since 2005, that for all the rules that had changed since then, they had to rely on someone else to enforce. So this will close, as the author said, regulatory gaps, update the lead ban act, allow Guam to regain primacy over the regulation of safe drinking water on island. The bill authorizes EPA to promulgate rules and regs for bottled water companies, water vending machines, hauled water, rainwater catchment systems, sanitary surveys, and design and construction standards. And we saw that previously in the ability, I mean, well, the requirement that, you know, of course EPA signs off on building permits for these types of reasons. So this, this just gives them additional tools when they are ensuring that all of these systems are in compliance. The other thing that this bill does is establishes the Safe Drinking Water Fund. And in this fund, it allows fees and fines to be placed, separate and apart from other funds and not subject to the governor's transfer authority. Of course, I'm very much hoping that this is a fund that the Guam EPA will be able to manage, to plan for long-term uses and needs, and that it won't be raided, as we've seen some of the other funds that are managed by the Guam EPA. There were initially some concerns that EPA, Guam EPA, did not have sufficient resources for the additional mandates, you know, provided in this bill. However, Guam EPA has continued to apply recent federal statutes for the Safe Drinking Water Act to Guam in accordance with federal requirements through their work with the The concerns that GWA had raised in earlier drafts of the bill have been resolved. It's clear, GWA, from my reading, is in support of this bill. And I again want to commend Guam EPA and GWA for working together to get those resolved. It is of utmost importance for Guam to keep our drinking water safe. I think that's, that's a no-brainer. Everyone knows that. But what it takes to do that is very complex. We must be able to enforce a regulatory scheme. We must be able to give Guam EPA every tool available. We must allow Guam EPA to mitigate federal intervention, give an act locally, without having to refer cases to the US EPA for enforcement. We've seen the impact of chemical contaminants in our soil and drinking water in the past. In fact, it's the same sponsor of this bill who had hearings to show us, you know, how the different wells were being regulated and how Guam did not control the standards of contamination on many of those wells. And that we were reliant on federal rules that didn't, that were still being debated, were not changing seemingly fast enough. Our land and water resources were finite and our, you know, obviously, this is their key to our, our future, our children's future, our economy. Everything about Guam is reliant on safe water and to prevent contamination of our soil and our drinking water. So again, I commend the author for the work on this bill and, and the author and EPA for bringing us to this point again today. This is a big feat. Sidois Massey, Madam Speaker.
Way to go, Senator Dantela. On the main motion, Senator Joseph Augustine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to, number one, state, number one, I am supportive of this bill. And I thank the author. And you know, after reading the legislature intent and looking through the bill, 126 pages, and in my colleagues, if you take a look at the bill, and most of you I know have, we would remind ourselves, as much as on many occasions when we had problems with our water, we always had to, they always had to turn to the federal government. Well, with this, we can start taking care of ourselves. That's number one. Number two, the bill also adopts federal statute, federal regulations that exist, they can bring us up to par with the federal government and be able to do our own rules and regulations. And gosh, thank you to the author for getting this updated. This is what, almost 15 years in the making. And I have spoken to some of the folks at EPA and I, and after going over the bill for the past hour, I'm like, wow, there are a lot of changes, a lot of update overdue. And with that note, Madam Speaker, I'm in full support of this bill. Thank you.
Senator Sinagstein. Minority Leader?
Sidois Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity. And I'd like to thank the author of this legislation. It was, is quite a feat, what she was able to accomplish. We know that this was long overdue and for something this extensive, it took a lot of collaboration with everybody involved, all the stakeholders involved, not on a local level, but also on a federal level. I do have a question though, for the author of the legislation.
Go ahead and state your question, please.
The testimony that was dated June 12, 2020, from Guam Waterworks had quite a bit of concerns and comments following certain definitions and further down on the Water Act. So could she let us know if any of these were addressed and the ones that were not, as to why it was not addressed?
Senator Perez, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. And yeah, I'm just going to pull out my notes right now. But yes, so we did have conferences between Guam Waterworks and Guam EPA. And so many of the suggestions by Guam Waterworks were basically, well, basically, yeah, they were, yeah, were some, I guess the one change, if I can think about, I think, so GWA accepted a lot of the original language. So initially, they, some of the information that they were questioning, they ended up accepting because, you know, Guam EPA is looking to regain primacy. So they have to send in their application and they wanted to make sure the language matched federal regulations. And if there was too many changes, so things like interstate transport of water, it was kept there even though it doesn't apply. But the idea of keeping it there was that to try to mimic the federal regulations as closely as possible in order to regain primacy. So some of the language was agreed to by GWA. And I think a lot of the, you know, basically it required more of a dialogue between Guam Waterworks and Guam EPA so that they can come to an understanding that in regards to sampling. So one of the questions that Guam Waterworks had was, why duplicate the process? I mean, they, they're already engaged with certified samplers. And so in talking it over with Guam EPA, they were able to change at least some of that language, or at least to be assured that there was some understanding regarding certification, ensuring that there wasn't any duplication.
Minority Leader? Does that help?
I don't, was she done?
Not yet, not yet.
I didn't think so. Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, some of the language that was suggested, so if I can go back, there was a question regarding authority. So in section 5123, some of the comments were, you know, would that, would Guam EPA give up its authority under this section? And so we put in the language to reinforce the fact that all authority that is given by this chapter shall remain with Guam EPA. So Guam EPA might, might contract out certain services, but we wanted to ensure that authority remained with Guam EPA. So that was some of the language or questions that GWA had. I think some of the concerns that GWA had also was in the design, the design of infrastructure. And so since GWA is under stipulated order, they're already working out the difficulties with US EPA. And so I think after the dialogue with Guam EPA, they, they agreed that it was just a matter of more communication between the two entities. There was one other change, there was the, and I have to go back and look and see, but there was a language that we did change based on, or at least Guam EPA agreed to changing. And it had to do with the backflow prevention. So that, that was language that was changed in response to Guam Waterworks. But I think for the most part, a lot of it just had to do with, you know, this understanding that there would be some acceptance of what they were doing and some sort of an agreement that what GWA is doing can be recognized by Guam EPA. But Guam EPA wanted to still retain the ability to enforce. And, you know, so that's, that's, that's what came out of the discussion. And so GWA was able to accept the changes in the bill without exceptions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you to the author, because I think it's very important that all stakeholders were at the table during the discussion and the, you know, formulating of this legislation, understanding the stipulated order. There's, there's still things in compliance that I, I think on a local level, we still feel, you know, that we shouldn't have to do, but on a federal level, it's required. I'm glad to hear most especially about the lab testing, because I do know that Guam Waterworks, they have the ability to do their testing with certified individuals. So I'm glad that was cleared up. The last thing on the Safe Water Drinking Fund that was created, and it stipulates that this fund shall be used with the PWS. And it kind of defines what the PWS is, you know, it's almost like it's everything under this guy. But if I'm not mistaken, this would be, it says under the administration, and this is under the administration of EPA. Madam Speaker, if I could ask the author?
Senator Perez, do you have an answer?
PSW, the PWS is stipulated under EPA.
Sorry, what was the question? That could be restated?
No problem, no problem. This is under the Safe Water Drinking Fund, section 53124. And it talks about the ability for the staff and resources to assist the PWS, owners, operators, et cetera. I think it's important to kind of explain what PWS really is. I know there's a definition there, but it's kind of broad. And I think it's important to know since this is the funding that it's going to support. So what is the PWS?
Senator Perez?
Yes, that's, that's a good question. So yeah, that's, the Safe Drinking Water Act really regulates public water systems. And it's generally a system that supplies water for human ingestion for households, I believe, over 25,000 households. Maybe, yeah, let me just double check the definition. Yeah, so, I'm sorry, it gets very technical. So yeah, the public water system is a system that provides water for human consumption. And it says it specifically, and that's what regulations really are. It has to really get specific. And so if a system has at least 15 service connections, or regularly serves at least 25 persons, at least 60 days out of the year. So in the, in the Safe Drinking Water Act, they do categorize different water systems. For this one, it would, the implementation of Safe Drinking Water Act applies mostly to the public water systems. And on Guam- And on Guam, there are ten different public water systems, uh, three for GWA, two for the military. And then you have these smaller private, um, water systems such as Coco, Coco, Coco's Island, Coco Palm Resort, Guam International Authority, Guam Plaza Hotel, Guam Regional Medical Center. So they each have their own separate po, public water systems which have to, uh, comply with the Safe Drinking Water Act.
Thank you, Senator Sinag.
Thank you, thank you, Madam, uh, Speaker, for that opportunity. And it, it just goes to show you the extent, extent of work that was put into this, you know, in, in tackling all areas when it, when it comes to safe water, um, litigation and, and what they, we, along with all the stakeholders involved to put this together. It, it really is a lengthy piece of legislation, but definitely it, it was, it was mostly needed, um, after so long of not putting together. And I, I commend the author of this legislation for actually spending so much time and, and putting this together. And I greatly appreciate it personally, too, for what she's done here. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Any, thank you, Minority Leader. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else? If not, Senator, Senator Clint, I will recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a point of inquiry for the author of the measure.
Please take your question.
Thank you. My question is, uh, specifically with regards to page twenty-five, line sixteen. It talks about rainwater catchment systems. And it, it says, "The Guam EPA may promulgate separate regulations for monitoring and other requirements specifically for rainwater catchment systems." Uh, so my question to the author is, is this, uh, intended to allow Guam EPA to regulate private rainwater catchment systems? Like, say, a private homeowner, uh, has a rainwater catchment system on his property? Would they, is this intended to allow Guam EPA to regulate that?
Thank you, Senator. Senator Perez, would you like to yield?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, so it would, it would, uh, regulate rainwater catchment systems that are tied into the municipal water supply, which could potentially, um, be a source of, of, um, you know, contaminants. It doesn't apply to rainwater catchment systems that are off-grid. Um, that is, uh, I, basically, it's a gap. It should be Department of Public Health that oversees that. Um, but as it pertains to directly tying into the municipal water supply, this, this bill would, would oversee that.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, uh, Senator Clint. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Perez, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to thank my colleagues for the discussion and the questions regarding Bill two eighty-three dash thirty-five. The Safe Drinking Water Act is a cornerstone of ensuring public health by ensuring safe drinking water. Historically, at the turn of the twentieth century, waterborne disease was one of the major sources of mortality in the United States. And with the passage of the Safe Drinking Water Act and amendments through the decades, combined with the necessary funds to upgrade infrastructure, government can provide safe drinking water reliably. It was through these experiences and assuming of government's responsibility to protect public health by ensuring safe drinking water that Safe Drinking Water Act was created and amended in response to the needs and changes in technology. As it stands, local Guam safe drinking water laws are out of date, which has resulted in Guam EPA losing primacy or the ability to directly cite violators. Our drinking water is our responsibility. We must take action and solve this problem by updating local regulations. It's time for Guam to reclaim leadership and directly hold violators accountable for endangering our island's drinking water. Bill two eighty-three dash thirty-five adopts current federal drinking standards and removes regulatory lap, gaps in local law. Additional localized amendments were made, but each change either meets or exceeds federal regulations, which is a requirement for gaining primary enforcement authority over our island's safe drinking water program. And these revised regulations also adopt the US EPA's revised total caliform rule and the groundwater rule, which protect against the transmission of waterborne disease. Both took effect after Guam's laws were last updated, so they are currently missing from local statute. Finally, the bill significantly updates the Guam-led Ban Act, which was last revised in nineteen ninety-nine, and includes methods for improved enforcement. Bill two eighty-three dash thirty-five establishes a process to set interim action levels for emerging contaminants, which is pretty important, you know, considering we do have contaminants such as PFAS, which can affect our immune and liver function, and increase the risks of certain cancers, high blood pressure in pregnant women, and other effects as more studies are being released. Ultimately, Bill two eighty-three dash thirty-five is about safety and responsibility. The measure protects the public and our environment and enables Guam EPA to gain primary enforcement authority over our island's drinking water. Lastly, I should note that Bill two eighty-three dash thirty-five was developed in close collaboration with Guam EPA, with input from Guam Waterworks Authority. And this was a collaborative effort, and I thank Guam EPA for their expertise and months of hard work. I am proud that together we can usher in a new era of safety for the agency and our island. Sides, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Perez, to place it in the voting file?
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place two eighty-three dash thirty-five as, um, as substituted on the floor, uh, in the third reading file.
Voting file?
In the voting file, thank you.
On that motion, are there any objections, seeing or hearing? None. Motion carries. Before we go into Bill three, one, two, I'm just gonna ask, uh, for a moment's recess so clerk can confer with legal regarding a previous bill. We are in a moment's recess. In minutes twenty, cinco, no less, the Tura in Guam is back from recess. I'm going to recognize Senator Mary Torres on Bill number three, one, two, dash thirty-five. You are recognized, Senator Torres.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place Bill number three, one, two, dash thirty-five LS as substituted by the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, and the Guam Build-Up, which is an act to amend section four, four oh three D through F, Article Four, Chapter Four, Title Four, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the Civil Service Commission to null and void personal actions which are in violation of existing laws or regulations, and to establishing penalties for public officials who unjustifiably refuse to cooperate with such investigations. And to further amend section four, four oh six of Article Four, Chapter Four, Title Four, Guam Code Annotated, relative to removing the application of the ninety-day rule for post-audit investigations. And to further amend section four, four oh eight of Article Four, Chapter Four, Title Four, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the enforcement of Civil Service Commission orders, and to further require the transmittal of the Commission's rules and regulations to Illes, La Tura, and Guam into the third reading file. And if I may speak on the measure, please.
And it's introduced by?
This, uh, act was introduced by myself and by, uh, yourself, Speaker Barnes.
Thank you. On the motion, please proceed.
Thank you. I want to give an overview of, of what this bill entails. Um, the law as it's The law as it stands right now, under Section 1422C of the Organic Act of Guam, the Organic Act establishes a merit system, and Guam law provides that persons appointed to the classified service of the government of Guam positions in the executive branch must qualify for the job, and their personnel action must be in compliance with personnel rules and regulations and with laws in accordance with the merit system. Currently, the Civil Service Commission finds it difficult to enforce its actions when null and voiding certain personnel actions which are in violation of existing laws or regulations. And the reason for this is, the way the law is currently written, agencies can avoid enforcement by simply not giving a timely notice of proposed adverse action. Also, current law in Chapter 4, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, requires that an adverse action following a decision to null and void a personal action must take place within 90 days of when the agency knew or should have known the personnel action violated existing laws or regulations. Often, this 90-day window will have expired before the Commission is asked to investigate, or it will expire before the Commission can finish its investigation and make a decision. Additionally, current law does not penalize management who may refuse to cooperate with the Commission in these post-audit investigations. The other nuance with current law is that it can have a catastrophic effect on the employee whose position is voided through no fault of his or her own, as the Commission concurrently null and void a personnel action even if the employee has been receiving favorable evaluations for many years, and therefore, the employee had reason to believe that his or her job was safe and permanent. So what this bill does, Bill 312-35 LS, is it remedies these problems with current statute, and it allows the CSC to directly serve the employee the notice of adverse action following a null and void finding, with or without that agency's concurrence. Secondly, the measure would also remove the 90-day rule from such investigations and impose a personal fine on any agency official who unjustifiably refuses to cooperate or delay an investigation. At the same time, Bill 312-35 recognizes that the needs of the institution must be balanced by the rights of the employees. To ensure that classified employees who've passed probation and consistently met the requirements of their job are not adversely affected, Bill 312 would establish a statute of limitations where the Commission must take action within six months of the effective date of the personnel action in question. The time span was put in and supported by the Civil Service Commission through the many months that we were working on this together. In short, implementing the six-month statute of limitations for when one can file a complaint simply instills timeliness in the post-audit process. It would assist the Civil Service Commission to take prompt post-audit actions that are necessary to weed out violations of personnel laws and regulations, and to help facilitate the timely and effective remedy and resolutions in expediting violations of personnel laws and regulations. I want to note, Madam Speaker, that the document, there is a document that shows the difference between the introduced version and this substituted version, which was uploaded into the session file folder. Following the measure's public hearing, I made the following changes to Bill 312-35. And if anybody wants to follow the document, it is called Summary of Changes for Substitute Bill 312 in the folder. But essentially, I'll outline it. To ensure consistency, the committee struck and replaced language in Section 4403D2A to simply mirror the terms we used relative to CSC's authority in 4403D5. The committee also struck language in Section 4403D3, which originally permitted the CSC to carry out its duties absent the adoption of rules and regs. The CSC had noted that its proposed rules of procedure remain in draft form with the Office of the Attorney General, and had not been reviewed and approved by the Office of the Attorney General for several years, actually since 2009. So recognizing the need for rules and regulations, I authored a new section in the bill authorizing the CSC to transmit its rules and regulations directly to the legislature. And any proposed rules that the CSC transmits shall have no effect on the post-audit complaints filed with the CSC prior to the legislature's approval or disapproval. Finally, we added a new Section 5 reflecting the procedure for approving the CSC's rules and regulations in this bill, and the severability section was subsequently renumbered. I just want to add that although the bill may seem complex, it is a long overdue measure to correct one issue in the post-audit process that made it nearly impossible for the CSC to fully enforce as originally intended. And most recently, we've had a series of challenges in the court system that necessitated the need for these changes to be made to the CSC statute with regard to post-audit reviews. And I just want to emphasize too that this was a measure that was done in concert and after thorough meetings and discussion and drafting and redrafting with the Civil Service Commission, including their board members, their executive director, and their legal counsel. And I sincerely ask my colleagues to, let's do this, let's do this bill which will ensure that the merit protection system is in place and that the trust that the community has in the selection of classified employees is protected and upheld in statute. Situus maasi. And thank you, Madam Speaker, for being my co-sponsor in this effort. I appreciate it as well.
Very welcome, Senator Mary Torres. On the main motion, anyone wishing to speak on the main motion? Anyone? If not, Senator Chulai, would you like to speak on the main motion?
I'm wondering if we can have a recess, Madam Speaker. I have two versions of a subbill, and I'm told this is the one, but I just, for me, well, there's another speaker. I'll wait, yeah. I just need to do some.
Minority Leader, Senator Chidwe, you are recognized on the main motion.
Situus maasi, Madam Speaker. For the opportunity to discuss concerns I have with Bill 312-35. What Bill 31-35 does, it does several things, from changing the process to the statute of, to the statute of limitations, to changing the fines of directors and deputy directors. Currently, Madam Speaker, the directors and deputy directors would be fined 10% reduction in their salary if they fail to comply with the process of adverse action. I'm not sure why we would want to lower this penalty for something as important as the responsibility of an agency head to address the justification of an individual's job. The duty of a director is to provide the CSC within 10 days of an agency audit that may be in question, that is brought to their attention. The director is also required, to CSC, the director is also required to provide a notice of adverse action within 90 days to the individual employee, which last year, it was, not last year, but I think it was just recently, in the last legislature, there was a bill, I think it was in the 34th, that changed from 60 days to allow now 90 days to provide this information to the employee, if the findings showed any individual employee was hired without proper qualifications. Madam Speaker, there has been situate cases where a director has sent not a notice or the audit to the CSC, but more like a Dear John letter, asking the Commission to request and to overlook the situation, when it was clear that the employee did not meet the qualifications and refusing to provide the adverse action to the employee. And this is when the penalty comes in. So I'm not sure why we would want to adjust a penalty from 10% of a salary of a director to only $1,000. It becomes a major problem. However, nothing stops the CSC from providing this notice to the employee as well as the Civil Service Commission. Well, nothing stops the Civil Service from providing this notice to the employee. The issue I also have with this bill puts a statute of limitations of only six months to terminate an employee who did not qualify for the position and was not hired by their merit, which, Madam Speaker, it's all about protecting the merit system. So let me give you a little bit example. If individuals were hired, they're usually into the government of Guam, they're usually hired on a six-month probation, and at the discretion of the director, sometimes that probation is extended for another six months. In most cases, people are on probation for one year. But what this bill does is it states that after six months, an employee that's in, sitting in that job position, if they are not caught falsifying their application, after six months, they're going to be able to get away with it.
Point of information.
Sure. Go ahead, please.
State your point of information, please.
That statement was actually addressed at the public hearing by the attorney for the Civil Service Commission, and in no circumstance, if anybody falsifies something and it is found out whether it was, even if it's after the six months, at the point that somebody discovers that someone committed fraud on an application, that starts the time clock. So the statute of limitations in the situation that the scenario that the previous speaker was discussing does not apply, and that was in the committee report and specifically explained.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Minority Leader, you still have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I'm not mistaken, then we're seeing that if an individual is in a position for six months, and after six months, let's say that six months and one day, somebody finds out that the application that they, that what they put on their application was not true, that they didn't have an accounting degree, or they didn't have whatever qualifications to meet that particular position, then we can't go back and terminate this individual, because there's a statute of limitations to this. And Madam Speaker, that's, you know, sometimes people are in a position for almost one year before they become a classified employee.
Minority Leader, I'm going to have Senator Torres. Do you have a point of information? I see you raising your hand. I just want to make sure.
Yes, if I may, I will read from the record the exact statement made by the Civil Service Commission attorney specifically.
Madam Speaker, it's not a point of information. If you can allow me to finish, then if there's any questions after there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Senator Mary Torres, do you have a point of information?
Madam Speaker, I'm asking if I can finish my testimony here, and if there's anything after, then I'm happy for her to clarify, you know, and give her a point of information. But I would like to finish.
The author of the legislation is unit back. Please proceed.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the author for allowing me to continue. So, Madam Speaker, the point is that, again, this is a six-month statute of limitation that had been placed in this bill, that if we do not find an employee who has falsified or who has put down certain credentials in there that they've never had on their application and doesn't meet the merits required to get that job, then basically, they get to keep their job for life. And one situation happened, when a CSC member, there was a comment made by a CSC member to a director, when they asked to, let's just not look at this, let's just let this go, and that CSC, he responded with, "Your concern is the employee. Well, my concern is about the 20-plus applicants who were qualified for that job." I also see it another way, Madam Speaker. What about the over 1,000 government of Guam employees who provided justified credentials and went through the merit system to get their positions? It would not be fair to them. Are we supposed to award somebody who lied on their application? Basically, they could say, "If I can trick the government of Guam, then I'll have a job for life. I just need to keep my head down low for six months." And that's usually the case until someone catches on and reports that person, or even an agency audit might be able to catch that person, which is not usually done all the time. I mean, God knows how our employees, the government of Guam employees are doing so much with very little, but six months goes by very, very quickly. Very quickly. Most of our agencies and employees are inundated with work. The process for a person hired in government Guam usually goes through a six-month probation, as I mentioned, before they become classified. Sometimes, like I said, the discretion of the director, he or she can be extended for another six months for probation. This is common. So again, why do we have a probationary period of up to one year, and this bill has a limitation of six months? Again, this bill seeks for six months, while the law allows for one year for a person to become classified. Let's not forget there is a process of appeal also for these individuals who feel that they did meet the requirements. There is a process of appeal. You know, in the testimony from the director, he speaks only about, in the testimony from Director Daniel Leon Carrero of the CSC, he only speaks of the null and void, which I'm still trying to see how this bill addresses this on the null and void, because you might be able to void out a personal action, but you don't void out the position, only the personal action. However, in his testimony... However, in his testimony, there was no mention of a cap of six months. His testimony talked about the improvement to the merit system and addressing the post-audit, which brings me to where are we going to find the funding or manpower that's provided in the section on page four, line three of the bill, which requires the commission to provide the notice of proposed action, and in paragraph section A, provide a notice of final adverse action. On top of overseeing the case, you now have CSC acting as the director, the prosecutor, the jury, and the judge. The testimony provided by the director at CSC did not mention how they would implement this with their staff and the budget they currently have. These are extra duties. Madam Speaker, the bill has so many questionable variables here that does not add to ensuring that the merit system is protected. It becomes more lenient to the individual who filled out an application that didn't have the qualifications, and we're again supposed to award somebody like that? Like I said, Madam Speaker, keep your head low for six months, maybe the government won't find out, and then after six months, I'll have a job for life. And again, what about the thousands of government of Guam employees who went through the proper channels and had the qualifications to meet their job that they have? We have to think about them too. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Titegui. I will yield back to the author of the legislation on the point of information. Do you want to continue the point of information?
Please, Madam Speaker.
Yes, I will yield to you.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
The time span of six months to file was put in place and supported by the CSC. Supported by the CSC. And part of the reason for this is according to the data that was provided to the committee after the public hearing, post-audit complaints range from three days to 23 years to file a complaint. And upon averaging the 17 complaints that they receive, the CSC reported that it takes nearly three years to file a complaint after an employee has been hired. The executive director, Mr. Daniel Leon Guerrero, attributed this range to the fact that there is presently no statute of limitation in filing a post-audit complaint with the civil service. And in his own words, he said, "Therefore, it is reasonable to infer that employees have been taking their time to file complaints under these conditions," he stated, adding, "Once employees are effectively informed, we can reasonably expect to file a complaint within the six-month timeline." I want to be clear, Madam Chair, this statute does not, however, prevent management from issuing an adverse action against an employee if they find out that the employee committed fraud. And if I may read from the public hearing excerpts, Attorney Miller, Eric Miller, provided this example at the public hearing, and it speaks to the previous speaker's point, the erroneousness of the point, and then quote from Eric Miller.
Speaker, point of order. Are we on a closing? I'd like to speak.
No, I'm just, I'm going to read for the record.
This is not a closing, Senator.
She's arguing that the previous point was erroneous.
No, no.
Okay, may I strike that from the record, and I'll just continue reading.
Please, please continue with the point of information. Thank you very much, everybody. Please continue that, Senator Torres.
To reiterate, I want to be clear that the statute does not, however, prevent management from issuing an adverse action against an employee if they find out that the employee committed fraud. Eric Miller provided this example at the public hearing, and I'm going to quote directly from Eric Miller, it's in the committee report, and he stated, "Suppose a person lied on their application, lied about having a high school diploma, and five years' time has passed. At that point, the agency director can say, 'Okay, five years ago, you falsified your application. We're going to commence an adverse action against you for lying to us back then, and we're in time to do this because we just discovered it. Management is well within the 90 days of knowing or should have known, and they had no reason to suspect five years ago.'" Because they didn't know that it was a lie about the high school diploma, that employee can be terminated. So I just want to be absolutely clear that in implementing the six-month statute of limitation for when one can file a complaint simply instills timeliness in the post-audit process, and it would assist the Civil Service Commission to take prompt post-audit actions necessary to weed out violations of personnel rules and regulations.
Madam Speaker, now, is this a point of information? Because right now, it's becoming a debatable scenario, so I mean...
With all due respect, Senator Torres is finished with her point of information. Anybody else on the main motion? Anybody else wishing to speak? Senator Chalai, you had your hand up earlier. Are you ready at this time? You may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As to the point that was just recently made as to whether it's fraud or not, if it was an error by the hiring authority, then it's not fraud, so the fraud provision will not apply, and so it's still going to be, you know, allowed. But anyways, on the bill, I'm going to, so this bill, you know, I think the intent is good, start, you know, we're talking about the ability of the Civil Service Commission to do an audit on positions of the government of Guam to ensure that they are actually filled properly, that they were not illegally or improperly filled by someone who doesn't meet the qualifications. We've seen cases recently where that has actually occurred, and the court, where I think we're here today, because the court ruled that actually, contrary to what had gone on for years and years, where for years, when the civil service ruled that something had, you know, been filled, the position, they did an audit, the position was filled wrong, that they just, you know, told the commissioners or the board to fix it, that the person's not qualified, cannot fill that position. But the court recently said that actually, when the commission finds that out, there's other requirements now, that that means we have to file an adverse action, and the employee gets to, I mean, to, you know, participate in all of those adverse actions rules in favor of the employee, including if he didn't get notice of it within 90 days, or 60 days back then, but 90 days of, and they count it from, I think, when the audit started, or, you know, it's kind of unreasonable. In other words, no management will ever win a case under that type of scenario. So the bill is good in that it's trying to fix the law now, you know, after, you know, it being pointed out by the courts that we need to do something, or we will not be able to correct those, you know, the merit system, where people are putting in, being put into positions classified, but really not qualified for that particular position. And it may not be fraud, it may be error, it may be, you know, bad management. At worst case, it's politics, right? I mean, that's the worst case that we don't want to see, and so that's why this is, this whole system was developed, is to protect that. But, so I think there's parts of this bill that I like. For example, the part that says, you know, if the agencies are not cooperating after the civil service has told them, they've done your audit, and they're telling the agencies, "The person's not qualified for this position. We've made our findings, we've made our decision. Not qualified, you know, remove them." And the agency does not want to do that, or the agency doesn't want to provide information on a timely basis, so of course, the end result is unfair. It allows that employee to stay in place without being qualified, and just because the board says so, not because of merit and not, you know, as intended by our merit system. So the parts of this bill where they put a penalty on commissions and boards and the government employees, or not the employees, but the, you know, the decision-makers for actually acting in good faith, and they put a penalty on them, I like those parts of this bill. I also like the part that makes it clear that the commissioners, the civil service commissioners have final word, and that anyone who wants to appeal that, you know, needs to go to court. That, I think, is very consistent with past practices, and I do like the part of the bill that intends to separate this from a regular adverse action. I, that's, in fact, I like that the best, that this should not be treated like an adverse action. It should not be subject to that regular 90-day limitation, and if the board doesn't act, or, you know, the employer does not act within 90 days, then, you know, the employee gets to stay in the job. If you use a very extreme example, for example, the coroner, you know, the medical examiner's position, if we put someone in there who was not qualified, and just because we wanted to, or we messed up, you know, do we keep them there because it's unfair to him? No, I say no. So that's the only part of this bill I don't agree with. And so there was a debate at the public hearing about, you know, do we allow an exception because we feel, you know, sorry for the employee, and that we, you know, if he didn't know he wasn't qualified for the position, and he's been there over six months, we should make him stay there? And I just don't think so, Madam Speaker, because it's not fair. It's not fair to any other employee, it's not fair to the merit system that we are trying to protect, and that is our job here, I think, as senators, is to protect this merit system. And it's the government managers' job to do the hiring correctly, to do that hiring correctly so that we can rely on them, and we won't have those types of errors, and to follow the rules, get advice from the civil service when they need it, if they don't know what the qualifications are, I'm not sure what the problem is or why this is happening, but it continues to happen, and so I think we have to be suspicious that there are other reasons why it's happening, and they're not all necessarily good faith efforts, I mean, errors. And to protect from that, I just think, putting a six-month limitation on whether, you know, whether if you're not qualified for the job, but you lasted more than six months, you can stay? No, I just, I can't see that, especially with jobs where we have very specific requirements. That's, there's just so many examples of that, but I'm hoping everybody gets the point on that, I don't need to belabor that. So I would, I would like to make amendments to this that I just kind of thought of right The civil service representatives at the hearing, they debated, and they said, "It's a pretty arbitrary number, the six months that they put in here, and that it could have been like it is now, unlimited, anytime. They can audit anytime. They discover five years later, they can audit. You know, they discover one month later, they can audit." Because that would, that is how you best protect the merit system. Or, you know, some people liked six months because they tie it to a probationary period, but as was pointed out earlier, some probationary periods exceed six months. Some people said, you know, one year, some said two years, but, you know, I'm just thinking, if I have to arbitrarily come up with a time period of when I should allow an employee, I would tie it to politics, Madam Speaker, because that is what I'm worried about. Why not tie it to when those boards and commissioners' terms change, or when the governor changes, or when the legislature changes, which is every two years? I mean, those are extreme also, and, you know, of course, it doesn't apply in every case, but I'm just saying, if we're trying to protect from those, we need to keep this open. And so the part that, you know, of the bill that gives this protection to an employee who's been there for six months, even though they're not qualified, I just think there are other ways to deal with that, and, but not to just say, you're, you know, you're still qualified, you get to stay on. And the other part of the bill that I think, you know, we need to remove is the part that changes the Civil Service Commission from, you know, an adjudication body, where they determine when an employee appeals, whether, you know, they're correct or they're wrong, you know, whether management treated them fairly, correctly or not, you know, in those adverse actions. I don't want the Civil Service Commission to be the board now that's issuing the adverse actions. They are the decision-makers on the adverse actions. I mean, that was just one way to deal with this, you know, scheme that the commission will issue the adverse action, was a way to get around a board that refused to issue the termination or whatever had to be done with that employee, they just refused. They refused to comply with the civil services determination that the employee did not fit in the position. And I just, and so we've got penalties now on those managers or board members, I hate to keep saying board and commissioner, because we've got a civil service commission as well that we're also talking about, but the management, the employers, the bill correctly, you know, gives a penalty for them, and I like that part, but I don't like the part where we're going to turn the Civil Service Commission into now, you know, not just the judges of, you know, the, between the employee and the manager, but now also, they're going to be the one issuing adverse actions to employees. It's, I don't know, I just, I don't think that that should be their role, Madam Speaker. So I'm talking, you're looking at me, I'm talking about page four on line, for example, Here, they're talking about the commission to mean the civil service commission, and so the last line there on line five says, "The notice to the employee shall be in the form of a notice of proposed adverse action." So I would, I want to propose to remove that line, but if you continue and you look at same page, line 12, or let's just start on line 10, where the commission, the commission meaning civil service commission, declares any personnel action null and void, the civil service commission shall have the authority to demote or dismiss the employee and shall serve the employee and the agency head. I would just end it there, and not say with a notice of proposed adverse action, and where appropriate notice of final adverse action. And then keep that last sentence that says, "The agency or the employee may appeal this decision to the superior court." This is much similar to the current process, where they appeal directly these investigations of positions, and it's very separate, and I'm glad it's separated from how we treat adverse actions that come from management. The other concern I have is on page four, line 17, and this is in another, other parts of the bill as well, they talk a lot about the 180 calendar days after the complaint is filed with the commission, meaning if I want the commission to audit, you know, my neighbor's position, they, I think they were hired without having the credentials that they need, I file a complaint, and they have to make a decision within 180 days, or else they lose jurisdiction. I just think that the civil service commission is very, we've seen them take years, years and years, on adjudications, which I think should be priority. These are adjudications between an employee, whether they have a job, they lost their job, they were, you know, there was some action taken against them or not. So I just think that the civil service should prioritize those adjudications, and these investigations, I think they do it. I think they do it as fast as they can. But I don't, I don't think we should say the government loses if the civil service couldn't audit a position within 180 days. So right now, that's not the law. But I think that some of the language here in this bill might make that the law, that if you don't get it done within 180 days, the government loses and the employee gets to stay in a position for which they are not qualified. I don't think that that was the intent. And I think there's just one more part here. I commend the author for, on page six, section three, this says, "The 90-day rule of this subsection, meaning the adverse action subsection, shall not apply to actions taken pursuant to this." This, this one line here, right here, really addresses the court decision. So I very much think this, this is a remedy for the situation that we are under. And of course, the previous provision that makes it blanket across all autonomous agencies is great. I think that's fair. So my final, the final, I guess, question I have on the bill is on page seven. It's not really a question. I'm just saying, these are, these are the parts I don't agree with in the bill. I would like to support, you know, the parts that just separate it from the adverse action. But on page seven, the section five, it talks about rules and regs. And so I read the testimony that, or, you know, the summaries that said that. So what this provision will do, it says that civil service shall submit its proposed rules and regulations on how to take care of, you know, these investigations as to audits or audits to the legislature. And then it goes on to tell how, what's going to happen when those are submitted to the legislature. But the reason this is being put in here is because they said that they haven't received a response from the attorney general. But, but, you know, the attorney general is represented at that civil service commission. You know, the attorney, Eric Miller, he was, he's part of the attorney general's office. It was not clear why the attorney general's not answering. And that makes me concerned because if it's because there are issues with the rules and regs that make them complex or that the attorney general has concerns about, then that's, that's a good reason for them not moving on it, right? Of course, we're giving them benefit of the doubt. But I know I've exceeded my time, Madam Speaker. But yeah, I would just, I would just say as a matter of policy, if any senator wanted to pick up the rules and regulations and put them in here as a matter of law without review by, you know, the normal channels, that's still possible. But to mandate that they send them here and bypass the attorney general's review, I just think it's not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that at this point. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So Senator, if I may, if you still want to work on the proposed amendment, then what we'll go ahead and do is we'll go ahead and start off tomorrow. We'll take a recess this evening. You can work on that. And I will go ahead and afford you the opportunity since the time has exceeded, but to make the amendments necessary.
I appreciate it.
So you have time to look at that.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
If we, we will recess. It's 5:38, 5:37 right now. We will go ahead and recess till 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. Thank you, everybody. Good night.